And that might be a, that and other stuff, but that might be a good, good starting to be able to sort of work to interact with that tool a little bit and look at what the cost of it could be and just to.
And the reason I bring that up so sort of energetically is that we've had a lot of time in the past with children talking about our current configuration and we've had a whole lot of feedback about how, what works and what doesn't and it's not going away. So it's just something, I think it's a great transition. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right. I think you all are stuck listening to me again tonight. We just wanted to go over some changes that we've got that are happening for, with our TKI program. TKI stands for Transitional Kindergarten and.
Integrated.
What's that?
Integrated?
Yeah, yeah. And so we've seen some, to give you a little history of what TKI is, TKI is a mandatory two-year program for our kiddos that are on IEPs and it is a more restrictive setting than, than it would be if our kiddos went to, went to their, their home school and they were in a regular kindergarten class and they would get CWC and maybe some pull-out resource support. So it would be a little bit more restrictive than that. Really the focus has been on our students that are what we would consider developmental delay. Developmental delay is a, a label that our students can carry until they turn 10 and basically that just means that they're showing a, a delay in, in one of the developmental areas that, that we measure. And so when they turn 10, we would either look at dismissal from special education or look at giving them a different label like learning disabled or something like The students that are in, the students are in the reading and the math block the entire day, so they spend most of their morning in the general kindergarten classroom and then in the afternoon they would go into Ms. Amanda's room. Oh, I didn't introduce you guys, I'm sorry. This, so we had a committee that we put together when we looked at this and the, the whole committee is not here, but Amanda Minor is our TKI teacher that we have currently and then Melanie Garrison is our early childhood coordinator and Tammy Moore is our elementary coordinator. And so we had, we had a group of the four of us and then we had some kindergarten teachers, some support staff and, and then administrators that kind of looked at that and then some folks from Garfield as well to look at this as we, as we kind of looked at the changes that we're gonna go over with you all. So they spend their whole morning in the, in the, in the reading and the math blocks in the, in the regular kindergarten classroom and in the afternoon they're in Amanda's room where they work specifically on the goals that are connected to their IEPs. So that's kind of what TKI looks like. So what, that's what it looks like year one, then year two they would go back to their home school whether that be, wherever that be in, in Garden City and they would be enrolled in this regular kindergarten and they would do another year of kindergarten where it's a lot less restrictive and they're probably gonna have a lot less support. And so the, the whole goal on that is, is we're really looking at kiddos that are, we just think they need a little bit more time. Time is really the thing that they, that we're predicting that they need and hopefully through that, through that extra time, they're gonna be able to be successful in the kindergarten classroom. What did I just, there we go. So Mel, do you kind of want to go over, explain the process?
Absolutely. So over the summer we started working on the kindergarten readiness star rubric and one of the things that we noticed in the qualifying questions is a question that indicated are our children in a one-year kindergarten program or is there like an extra two-year kindergarten program? If we answered the question yes, then that meant that our kids were all going to a one-year kindergarten program regardless of what kind of kindergarten setting they were going into. And currently in Garden City we have two programs that are actually a two-year kindergarten program, so we were unable to pass the qualifiers because in order to pass the qualifiers you have to have yes on everything. So that kind of brought us to looking at our TKI program to see how we can make some changes to then get past those qualifiers to then be able to fill out the rubric for the kindergarten readiness star.
And I will say that I think, Dr. Carlin and I have talked about this a little bit and Steve you know more than I do, so if I'm speaking incorrectly, correct me, but my understanding is I think that the star recognition is something that we're in the process of applying for now to get like extra recognition from the state as a district, but I think moving forward that's probably gonna be connected to accreditation and it's something that we're gonna have to look at a little bit more seriously kind of moving forward. Am I correct, Steve?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I, I'm processing here the, the language or the terms, but as I understand it, we, you basically are describing TKI was sort of a two-year process.
Yes, sir.
To get them through kindergarten.
Correct.
And the state's saying that's too restrictive.
That's not best practice to have two-year, to, to, to make it a mandatory two-year program.
So we gotta do something else.
Gotta do something to that, correct.
Yeah, we can't really predict because when they're at preschool and we're getting ready to do those kindergarten transitions, we're telling parents that they'll have to be in kindergarten for two years basically and we can't, we don't have a crystal ball to just say, oh yeah, that's exactly what they need, you know, sometimes they may only need one year and then they're ready for their first grade, so.
As I remember when we first started this, that, the challenge was being such a diversity of young ones and, and there's such a challenge at the kindergarten level to address all of that and so we were trying to come up with something in the middle.
Yeah, and, and really TKI, if, if you look at like our, our special education continuum, you know, from least restrictive to most restrictive, I think TKI would be right in the middle, so you have, you know, your gen ed kindergarten and maybe you've got some, some CWC or some resource support and then I think TKI falls there and then you move into self-contained kindergarten and then you move into our functional classrooms or our rise rooms and so that's kind of a continuum that you follow. So what we are recommending, what, what we came up with, our plan was progressive kindergarten, we're gonna, it's, we're gonna change the name to PKI instead of TKI, progressive kindergarten. And so basically what that will be, we'll set up, we'll set up the services, so instead of it being a two-year, a two-year commitment for them, it will just be a one-year commitment, but in order to meet some of those developmental needs that our kiddos are gonna have, we would really front-load the services at the beginning of the year. And so still gonna be the same process, it'll be an IEP team decision for them to go into Amanda's program to be in the progressive kindergarten classroom, but the, the first nine weeks of school they're gonna be with Amanda and, and Amanda will do all of their, all of their core instruction. The only time that they'll leave Amanda's room is when they go to specials, English, or excuse me, science, music, P E R, things like that, library, they'll leave, they'll leave her room, but the rest of the time she'll be required to do all of the, all of the core instruction in her classroom. Gradually releasing that, so after nine weeks then we will open it up so that they'll go to, they'll go to one block in, in the kindergarten classroom, so that, I think we decided we were gonna do reading first, right? So they'll go to reading, after, after the first nine weeks they'll go to reading and they'll, they'll, and then the rest of the day they'll be with Amanda still. And then we're gonna, after Christmas then we'll increase that to where they'll go to math and, and reading in the gen ed classroom and then they'll go back to Amanda for the rest of their day. So that when we get to this time when we're getting close to spring break, when the kiddos come back from spring break, they'll be in the kindergarten classroom the entire day with, with minimal supports. That's, that's kind of our hope and making that a, a one-year program. Now that's not to say that, that we can't have kids go two years, but what that means is we're not predetermining and we're not saying that every kid that's in that program is gonna be in a two-year commitment. We're gonna look at those kids individually, we're gonna follow the kindergarten retention rubric just like we, just like we would for any other kiddo to determine if, if that's appropriate for them.
So if they need that extra year then.
They would get, yeah, yeah, we would have that opportunity, but we're not, we're not making a blanket statement and saying that every kiddo in there. Because, you know, when I was at Garfield, we would, we would always have the parents, I mean that was a big conversation, when they went to TKI and, and our, and our self-contained kindergarten classroom was a two-year program as well and so we're gonna change that too, but that's a little bit easier to change than Amanda's because we don't have other, other parties working with that, but they signed paperwork, said, the parents would sign off saying that they understood that that was a two-year commitment so that they knew that they were getting into a two-year program or we won't do that anymore, it'll be based solely on the kindergarten rubric and we'll look at it that way. And I think, I think it'll work. We talked about maybe modifying the, the, the rubric for our kiddos because they are on IEPs and maybe we need to look at it differently, but Amanda really feels like, you know, if, if we're doing what we're doing, they should be able to, to pass the rubric and a lot of her kids this year are already doing that and so.
Yeah.
We've already dismissed a couple of kids actually from, from TKI this year, so I think if we're, it's gonna, we're gonna have our growing pains, it's not gonna work perfectly any kind of, anytime you have changes like this, but I think we've got a good, we've got a good foundation and, and there's a lot of folks that have had a lot of good ideas, so I think this'll probably work well. Anything else that I need to add there, girls?
No.
Okay, did it again. So some of the considerations that we talked about when the IEP is written, one of the things that I didn't want to have is if we're looking at doing our changes services every nine weeks, I didn't want to have to have an IEP meeting every nine weeks because that would be a quick way to get lynched by some sped staff on my part and so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna try to ride that with the services the way they are and then if we need to make changes down the road, we can make those changes as we kind of move forward. Amanda's gonna have to have an IEP meeting throughout the year at some point for her kiddos and so when we get to the point where we're at this point in the year and we're talking about services for, for the rest of this year and next year, that'll be the opportunity where she can really look at that last nine weeks of school, how much support do they really need and we can really individualize that, that for those kiddos at that time for that last nine weeks. And so we've kind of got it, she's kind of been working on a schedule and, and so that it'll, we'll be able to fill out the minutes and have that kind of pre-done at the beginning of the year. One of the other things that we talked about that's gonna be really, really important is if Amanda's doing all of the teaching at the beginning and then the kids are gonna transition into the, the regular kindergarten classroom, she's gotta be at the same place that they're at all the time. So it's gonna be really important that they're doing a lot of planning together, that they're, that they're following the same pacing guide, that they're, they're, they're in the progression with the lessons at the same time so that, so that when, when they leave Amanda's room to go into the general ed classroom, they're on the same lesson so we don't have any, any holes that we've got to fill for our kiddos, we don't wanna put any more barriers in front of them than the ones that they already have in front of them. One of the things that we talked about is, and I think this is just something that's good practice, but we really need to be mindful of the accommodations that our kiddos are gonna need as they go into that because they're not gonna have that support from Amanda like, like they typically have had in the past and so making sure that we're intentional in looking at our accommodations and making sure that we have the supports in place for our kiddos to, to be successful in that classroom. And then the last thing that we talked about is limiting the classroom to, to five, five kiddos per, per classroom, so right now Florence Wilson has, has three kindergarten sections and so.
Four.
Each, or four, but we would, we're gonna, yeah, sorry. So we would limit that number of kiddos that we would go in there to, to 15 would be the max that Amanda would have. She would only support three of the classrooms, one of the classrooms, the other classroom is supported by the self-contained classroom that's over there, so her kids only go into three rooms and so we would cap that classroom at 15, five in each kindergarten classroom would be what that would look like.
So that's the story right there, right? In other words, I mean, you, you already did amazing things with these kids over two years.
Right.
But now you're scrunching it into one year.
Mm-hmm.
And with some adjustments I'm sure and all of that, but how do you even do that? Well, apparently one way you do that is you limit the class size.
Which we've done in the past, we, we've always done that, Mark.
And, and like this year, I started out with 11 kids and seven, eight maybe of those 11 are going to pass the kindergarten rubric and would be able to move to first grade if parents wanted them to.
And so, and that's, I guess that's an important thing to bring up too. One of the things that we talked about is we're making this change, I don't think it's fair to the parents to change the rules in the middle of the game. So we've already told them that it's a two-year program, but we're gonna give the parents the option, if they, if they feel like their kiddos met the rubric and they want them to go on, then, then we'll let them go on to first grade, but if they feel like they would like to have them there for another year, we're gonna honor that because that's what we told the parents that we would do and so that'll be able to keep them a second year if that's what they wanna do.
And, and the other thing I would say, I don't know if you've got more detail, I apologize, but, but we've talked about this so much in trying to get kids kindergarten ready and then get them first grade ready and, you know, and so that they're off and, and they've got, they're well-trained in, as they get into second grade basically.
Right.
And if, because in the past when they weren't, it was on that classroom teacher and, and that takes a little bit from him or her for the rest of the class to try to get that one student.
Yeah.
What that student needs and so that was all of this thinking as I understand it, but, but now we're continuing to innovate, sounds to me like, and maybe it's okay, maybe it was swung way over this way for some kids having that mandatory two-year, but I, I'm just sitting here in awe of how you're gonna get this done given that the population is still there. And as I understand it, maybe in early childhood we continue to get big challenges through the door.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, and Mel can probably speak to, to the challenges at Garfield, but from what I've seen, I think our, our biggest challenges are really, really significant kids. The kids that are going into our rise room that, that have really significant needs. You know, when I was at Garfield as the principal, we had, Melanie was, was our rise room teacher and so she had, she had a classroom of between eight and 10 in the morning and eight and 10 in the afternoon. We've got two rise rooms over there now with eight to 10 in the morning and the afternoon and look at having a third next year. And just the kiddos that are coming to us with severe needs, that are non-verbal, that have very limited language, that have very significant other issues going along with that, I mean that, that's, to me, that's where our biggest challenge is going.
And we're also seeing an increase in students that have limited vocabulary. So a child that's three should have at least 500 words and a lot of our kids coming in have 50 or less words right now, so trying to build their vocabularies is a really big piece of what we're doing right now at Garfield.
So the plan for next year is like I said, the first nine weeks the students will be with Amanda pretty much the whole day, the second nine weeks they'll be with Amanda and they go to the reading block and then the third nine weeks that will go to both reading and math and be with Amanda the rest of the day. And then the fourth nine weeks, they're gonna be full-time in kindergarten and during those nine weeks Amanda will do the CWC and resource time just like a, a, a regular CWC and resource teacher would do in the buildings for those kindergarten kiddos. And we'll kind of look at what those needs need to be individually based on the needs of the kiddo.
I just wanna make sure that I have it right, CWC is class within.
Class within a class, yes ma'am, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, I just.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, 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 and I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yeah, class within a class. So some of the information that we felt like was gonna be important for the early child, early childhood teachers as they planned, to look at transitions, because this is the time of year when transition staffing start happening as we're looking at those kiddos leaving, leaving Garfield and going into kindergarten and whatever program that kindergarten looks like, what does, what does that mean? And so these are just, this is just kind of a list of things that, that the committee kind of put together to help, help those child, those teachers at Garfield identify whether those kiddos might be a good fit for, for the program. So are they able to recognize their name and, and can they, can they write their name with a model? Are they able to recognize their colors and their shapes, you know, just basic things that you would, you would hope your kiddos know? And so that's just kind of a list that we put together to, to share with the teachers and Melanie's already started sharing information with, with Garfield as we look at that. So this is how we're gonna measure success, obviously we're, this is a big change and I will say before TKI we had what was called DKI which was developmental kindergarten interrelated and that was back in the days of when we had Kinder Prep, we still have Kinder Prep programs. And so basically what that looked like is the sped teacher and the Kinder Prep teacher team taught that program and those kiddos were, the, the teachers were together, so you had, you had a group of, of general education students that were in Kinder Prep and you had a group of students on IEPs that were, were in developmental kindergarten together and, and they did that for a half, a half a day program and then they went on to whatever kindergarten program there was. When, when Kinder Prep went away 15, 16 years ago, we had to change that program and so then that's when it became TKI and so that was, that happened, I was still teaching at Florence Wilson when that happened, so that had to be about 16, 17 years ago I think is when that, when we changed from DKI to TKI. So ways that we're gonna, to, to look at measuring the, the success of the program, the first is looking at their IP goals, have the kiddos made their goals in their IP and if they've made their goals then, then we've, we've done what we needed to do. Another thing would be to look at their retention rubrics and, and what are we seeing on Amanda's retention rubrics from her class versus the other kindergarten classrooms, are we seeing a difference there and, and are we making the, the growth there that we want to? And then I think the other thing is, how many, how many of those kiddos that are, that are with Amanda in this program are we retaining for a second year of kindergarten? That'll, that'll give us an idea of, of how successful we are. And then lastly, and this is gonna be something that's gonna take us some time to get to this data because they're gonna have to turn 10, but as these kiddos get older and they get to the age 10, how many of these kiddos are we seeing? Because I always feel like our kids that are developmentally delayed, our goal for those kiddos is to get them off of an IEP before they turn 10. So how many of our kiddos that are coming to Amanda are we still seeing in special education after their 10th birthday? I think this is a, a good way for us to kind of measure the, the success of the program and gives us some good data. Questions?
Just a quick one.
It's alright.
So how you measure success on the back end in part depends on how you're able to identify candidates on the front side. So how are you doing that?
I think a lot of that, and Amanda, do you wanna speak to some of that and Melanie? But I think a lot of that is, we've gotta, we've gotta talk to our teachers about what these different programs are. Melanie does a really good job of.
Yeah, so we do PLCs, early childhood PLCs once a month and so we go over all the different kindergarten options, what they all look like, even down to like who teaches them, how to get ahold of them and then we talk about, you know, what does a student look like in each program? This year with progressive kindergarten, we've had some more talks just on what does it look like, what is the program going to feel like next year and then the teachers from there can ask questions as needed, so.
And we've talked about having Amanda because it is different, having Amanda go over to Garfield at, at a PLC or at a faculty meeting and talking with the teachers because this is gonna be different and I think the first couple of years it's gonna be a little different and they're gonna have to kind of, we're gonna have to work, work through some of the growing pains.
The, the early childhood teachers also fill out a referral form that just kind of gives me information on the kid and so I can look at that and if they have been in early childhood for three years and they've had Russell, there are just a whole bunch of other things that I look at to see if I feel that they would be a good candidate. It's kind of hard to explain, but.
Well, the, the reason why I ask that is, is that you've got incredible expertise here, you know, historically.
Sure.
And so there's that judgment. On the back side, you're talking about measuring success, but ultimately you're running right into the kindergarten rubric, I mean first grade ready rubric and so, you know, we're not always gonna have Amanda, I hope we have her for a long time, but.
Right.
And the team and, but there's no rubric.
And, and I think too, that's, that's, that's a good point too, Mark, I think as the teachers are looking and trying to make those decisions, they're talking to their service providers, they're talking to their OTs and their speech pathologists and they, they should be getting information from them. I think we talked to the school psychologists to see what they think and if there's questions and we're not sure, they'll ask, they'll ask for, for people to go in and do some observations on kids to help them to give recommendations. The one thing I will say that I think is good about special education, you know, it's not a perfect science and we're making our, our, our best guess with what we think is gonna work based on the information that we have in front of us and the data that we have, but the great thing about that is, is if we put the kiddo in a program and that's not the right fit, all we have to do is have another meeting and, and move them somewhere else. I mean, I don't, and that's one thing that I think will be beneficial with this, the change in Amanda's program that we've not been able to do because it's been a little harder, is if we've got a kiddo that's, that we move into a gen ed classroom and they're not doing so well, we can have another meeting and we can move those kiddos to Amanda, you know, five, six weeks into, into kindergarten, we can move them to her so that they're getting extra support, where it was a little harder to do that when it was a two-year program, you know? So I think, I think it gives us a little bit more flexibility to be a little bit more fluid with our, with our services too, so that part I'm excited about.
And on the flip side of that, it's also hard for us to decide.
Right.
It's a mandatory two-year program, but yet this kid has, doesn't qualify for special education anymore in December, so what do we do now? Do we make them do a second semester of kindergarten and then a whole nother year even though they don't qualify for special education anymore or do we move them to first grade? So that was something we had to.
I think the mandatory retention has created a lot of issues for us in a, in a lot of areas and so I think this will help clean some of that up. I think we're gonna, like I said, I, I think we're gonna have some growing pains and some things that, that we haven't thought about, but I was really pleased with, with the, with the committee, I think they did a good job of really looking at, looking at everything and, and coming up with it, so.
I think it's just a question about, and, and it doesn't sound like this, the more we talk, it sounds like it's a little bit different in these younger years and now this will even make that more so with the flexibility back and forth because, you know, when they get a little older, we talk about like not wanting to retain and things like this and I, I guess on the front end of this I was a little nervous, like do, does this make it like more intensive and does it make it more where we don't want, we don't wanna hold these kids back? You know, I worry about that, there's so little, some of these kiddos and we, you know, there was that year or two where we heard we need to have our kids playing, play learning, play, play, you know, that was like the big thing.
Right.
So that was kind of my question with this, you know, is, are they, were, do you feel like the requirements are making it where it's like more intensive for the kids to make, that way they can mainstream in it in a maybe better amount of time or, or the age wise or?
I, I, I think. I think kindergarten is hard in general now compared to what it, what it was like when I was in kindergarten. I mean, I think the expectations of our kiddos is much more, that the rigor that we expect of our kiddos is much higher than it ever was when I was in school. But I, I don't know that we've necessarily amped up the, the expectations of those kiddos because if they do need that second year, we're gonna give it to them, but what I do think we're, we're able to do now is we're not holding those kiddos back that we're ready to go on and I think that's, to me, that's the important piece is, you know, just like Amanda said, she's got kiddos that have already passed the retention rubric, well, why are we having them go to another year of kindergarten, that just seems silly to me and so we do need to be pushing those kiddos on and letting them, letting them go on.
And that's something that I can do in my room also is I can, I have a little more flexibility to do more hands-on manipulatives, fun activities and still get them to where they need to be.
I submit like we felt more pressure kind of, you know, because we wanna qualify for these programs and we're kind of making the changes that we feel are necessary, did that make sense?
Yeah, yes, my answer would be yes, I do.
You, you wanna make sure.
But, but, but I also think, I, I think, I, I think one of the things that we learned about this and Amanda and I talked about this, you know, we went to TKI 15 years ago, to my knowledge, we've not looked at this program in 15, 16 years, I mean, I think this did make us do that, I mean, I think we need to be doing those things, we need to be looking at our programs and talking about, is this still working? And I think if you look at, if you look at a lot of the research that's out there now and a lot of the best practices, retention is, is not as popular as it once was and I think, I, I think, I think when you do use retention, it should be used on a case-by-case basis and not just a, a broad stroke like what we've done in the past with it, so I, I think that's good. Yeah, I do feel pressure, I mean, I, I think we, we need, we do need to make some changes, but I think, I think, I think it's been good, I mean, I think the outcome that we've had has been, is gonna be better for our kiddos because I think it's gonna give them an opportunity to go on if they're ready and if they're not ready, we're gonna, we're gonna keep them for another year and we can look at doing something different with them that way. So that's the part I like is, and that's really what we should be doing in special education anyway. Everything we do in special education should be, that's why they call it an individualized education plan and, and predetermining is, is a really bad word that we don't like to use in sped, that gets you in a lot of trouble when you're, you've made up your decision on the kiddo before you've even sat down and looked at the data, well, that's kind of what we're doing and we're saying that they've gotta go to kindergarten for two years. We're doing a lot of predetermining there that's not fair to that kiddo.
Thank you.
I just wanna clear up one thing and that's, thank you for that last comment, that's a perfect segue. So the fact that the star recognition thing was maybe the straw that broke the camel's back here and calling this to our attention, Mr. Guiman's been hearing for years from the state about this, I don't want people thinking that we're looking at these changes because we're concerned about whether or not we get that recognition. We're, we're making these changes because all of these things kind of added up and we said, hey, it's been 15 years since we've really looked at how effective this is, but our goal all along here has been to have services that are the most appropriate for kids and I really applaud the team for diving into that and, and that's something we do, you know, and we're not asking the board to approve this, we're sharing this with you, this is a programmatic change that Mr. Guiman and his folks make in a number of areas all the time and, and Glenda through her department, we do those things all the time in applying best practices to what's gonna, you know, what's gonna work the best for our kids, so huge kudos to the teachers and the committee that are diving into this because it's tough, it's, you know, and, and the fact that they're, they've identified